Is to provide you with information on the draft environmental assessment and to also get your input into the project. Since we actually started this project, we've done a lot of work on the overall design, so we wanted to present where we are with the design concepts, as well as have you to review and comment on the various technical reports. Technical reports that we have available. Now, you will have an opportunity to actually provide comments in various forms tonight. After the presentation, you will be given the opportunity to come up to the mic and speak for three minutes, as well we have comment sheets that you can provide comments to us, or there's a court reporter that you can also speak with. So with that, let me first start off with introductions. We have Chairman Sharon Bulova with us tonight. We have Scott Kasperowitz with our Commonwealth Transportation Board. We have Jim Dyke with our Commonwealth Transportation Board. Delegate Mark Keem. We have Supervisor Pat Harity. Representing Supervisor Fry, we have Mike Coyle. And Supervisor Hudgens, we have Paul Davis. Did I miss anyone? Okay? All right, let's get started. Why improve I-66? Many of you are familiar with the conditions on I-66 that we deal with every day. There are segments of I-66 that carry over 200,000 vehicles per day in its heaviest and highest used segment. This project will seek to improve the safety along the corridor, as well as the key portion of this project is to move more people. It will also connect the existing regional transit network and carpooling network known as our HOV lanes. The project is also designed to decrease the amount of congestion that we have on the roadway, decrease cut through traffic on neighborhood streets and on arterial as well, and provide for future, the existing and future demand along I-66. So the purpose and need. This is really the first step to address the existing and future transportation problems on 66. The purpose is to improve the multimodal mobility along the corridor, as well as providing diverse travel choices in a cost-effective manner, as well as improving the safety and travel reliability. Here's the study area that we're looking at. The project actually starts just west of Route 15 in Haymarket, and goes just east of the Capitol Beltway, approximately 25 miles. As you can see, we actually impact, we go through Prince William, Fairfax, the city of Fairfax, as well as the town of Vienna, and also we have a major park along the roadway as well. Just a brief history, and I'm not going to take too much time with this. This project basically did not just start with the Tier 2 study. There was a Tier 1 study that was completed in 2013. From that Tier 1 study, we actually had six capacity improvements that the Tier 1 study actually identified. A total of 10 concept improvements were studied during that time. Six capacity improvements, and as I indicated, four non-capacity improvements. What the Tier 1 study concluded was that no one of these six concepts alone would address the needs of the I-66 corridor. So therefore, the six capacity improvement concepts was then combined into 47 possibilities. And those scenarios were analyzed, and here is how we got to what we have. We have the highest, we ranked them, we analyzed them, and these are the high, were the highest performing of those six concepts. As you can see, managed lanes ranks high in all of them, as well as the extension of metro rail. Now, many of you may ask, why not metro rail now? In talking with our partners at the Womata, basically, they have indicated that their focus right now is to, one, get the current system, two, and keep it at a state of good repair, concentrate on the purchase of eight-car trains, as well as finish the silver line. We're not, they're not saying never, but this, the project that we're proposing is just the first step in that. So here's what we have. Based on that, the Tier 1 study also concluded that the combination of those managed lanes, as well as express bus, actually provided a better opportunity to move more people through the quarter at a cost, in a cost-effective manner. Therefore, we built upon the Tier 1 study in order to help us to shape the scope for the Tier 2. So here's our scope for Tier 2. We have two managed lanes in each direction, where you would have HOV 3. Those individuals will drive for free. Non-HOV, or if you didn't meet the capacity of the 3, you could pay a toll in order to use the facility. And it would be handled through dynamic pricing or congestion-based pricing, similar to what we have on I-95 and 495. Now, the conversion of HOV 2 to 3 is consistent with the constrained long-range plan for 2020. You would also have three regular lanes at all times, free and open to the public. One of the other major features to the regular lanes is to add auxiliary lanes between intersections in order to help with the weaving problem that we currently have on 66. Another integral part of this project is the rapid bus service, and also looking at the placement of additional park-and-ride lots. Transportation demand management strategies are also a very important component to this So here's where we started. Three typical sections. The first basically represents, similar to what you see on I-95, where you have full shoulders on each side separating the managed lanes or the express lanes from the regular lanes. This concept was quickly ruled out because of the impacts on the adjacent communities. So that left us with two alternatives, Alternative 2A and 2B. The distinct difference between these two alternatives is what you see in the middle. There is a median preserve for future metro, extension of metro, or future Center 1 transit. Alternative 2B does not preclude that, however, it does not preserve the right-of-way right In addition to the typical section, we have access points, direct access points primarily from the park-and-ride lots and the interchanges into the managed lane facility. These access points were grouped into two different alternatives in order to be evaluated from a, from a traffic standpoint, as well as from an environmental standpoint. So how do we get to a preferred alternative? One of the things that I've said is that transit, park-and-ride lots, and TDMs are integral to this project, so that's going to be considered. We have the typical section alternatives that we will be evaluating, as well as the access points. And as you saw on the boards out there, there are some interchanges that have more than one concept associated with that. We will take, base that on the impacts from an environmental standpoint and from a traffic analysis standpoint. With your input tonight, then we will actually take the best elements of all of those in order to get to preferred. Now, the one question that we've been asked is if all A, all option B. It will be the best combination of all of that. So the last several months, our team has been working to evaluate the impact of this project from a broad range of environmental impacts. You see on the chart, basically, all of the things that we consider: impacts on the community, impacts on historic sites, natural environment, noise, air, and also the impact on homes. One of the, the key elements are one of the things that a lot of citizens are always concerned about is the effect of roadway or highway noise on their property. Noise, the noise walls that you see on the plans today were evaluated based on field testing and also modeling, and they will be reevaluated once we actually get to a preferred Traffic. So how will this project help improve the traffic onto I-66? The next six slides basically will give you a lot of information on traffic. How we will move more people, as well as to reduce the hours of congestion, improve the speeds along the corridor, and also eliminate or reduce the cut-through traffic on the local roadways. Now, where's Rob? Rob Punchey, there he is. Stand up so everyone can see him, see you. Rob is a traffic expert, and a lot of this information is a lot to digest. However, he's available to answer any detailed questions that you have. So, you know, let's start by where, where's traffic coming from? This graph basically gives us origin and destination. If you look at where traffic is coming from, the important takeaway from this slide is that only 4% of the traffic is originated west of Route 15. 66% of the traffic actually originates in Fairfax County. Not all from Fairfax County, but originate, like, at Route 28. It could be coming from Point South, but they connect into 66 at 28. Another interesting point of this slide is that at the Beltway, you will see that there is almost an even split on where people are going. 38% going into the, into, inside the Beltway, 38% going north towards Tysons and Point North, and 24% going south. And this is a really neat slide that talks about moving people. I'm going to take just a few minutes here. This is the AM rush hour. You have the existing condition, no build, Alternative 2A and Alternative 2B. The takeaway, and basically, it covers the whole 25-mile corridor, and it tells how many people it can actually move. The blue represents the general-purpose lane, green, express lanes, and the orange, the metro line that we have. This slide shows that with the proposed improvements that we have, it could move an additional 30 to 85% more people through the quarter in various locations. Similar picture for PM, where you're moving, you could move an additional 40 to 90% more people with the proposal that we have. Now, the key is the managed lanes and the transit improvements. Now, this is going to take a little getting used to, this slide. But the bottom line here is that you have existing conditions, you have no build, results out to 2040, build for Alternative 2A and 2B out to 2040. This basically represents the speed and the congestion that is occurring on 66 today, and how this, the proposed project would have an impact on that. All of us are familiar with red. Red basically represents a speed of 5 to 20, 25, 20 miles an hour, where you have 50 to 65 represented by green. And on the side is basically the various locations that you will have. And let me pause and say that this presentation will be available on the website for you to review. Bottom line takeaway is that this project will improve the speed of traffic on 66, as well as reduce congestion and reduce the time that people are sitting in congestion on I-66. Again, this speaks to the general-purpose lane, existing build, no build scenarios, and the PM basically shows the same. Bottom line, if we do nothing, traffic going westbound, especially near the areas where we have it now, the Beltway, Nutley, basically comes to a standstill for a longer period of time. Our rush hours now are between 6 and 9:30. This basically shows that that would extend a lot longer. Now, a lot of folks are concerned about traffic getting off of 66, or not being able to use 66. We have something that is called unmet demand. What that means is that, right now, the numbers show that anywhere from 10 to 15% of the people who want to be on 66 are not on 66, because the demand cannot handle that. That number grows to almost 25% in the future. What this project seeks to do is to keep those folks on 66 that want to be on 66. Now, this is a very sensitive, and we realize that anytime we're impacting someone's home, it's their home, so we don't take that very lightly. The project team has been working diligently, and we will continue to work on reducing those numbers. When we first introduced this plan to you in, early in 2015, we actually identified a significant number of residential relocations that we had. That number has been reduced between 18 and 11, 18 being the high. The strip takings also, the partial takes, we are also working on reducing those numbers as much as possible as well. I just want to go over very quickly some of those locations that we actually have made some significant changes. This is right at the Beltway. One of the things that has changed drastically since the last time, some of you have seen these plans, is related to stormwater management. And we were able to take a lot of the stormwater management ponds away, therefore, reducing the number of homes that we're impacting. Now, this is at the Beltway. This interchange is still being reviewed for continued reduction and improvements on the footprint as well. Another location that the plans basically showed impact was right around Dunloren, Dunloren Village, Dunloren Woods. There was a flyover ramp that actually impacted townhome, a townhome community there in a townhome. And there was a stormwater management pond that was associated with that, and other stormwater management ponds to the north. As you can see, we've shifted that flyover ramp to the east, and we were able to eliminate one stormwater management pond and reduce the size of the other to the north. Also on Cedar, we did have some impacts to homes there. We're looking at a different phasing for reconstructing the bridge, so therefore, we were able to stay within the existing footprint of the right-of-way. Also, this is at 123. As you can see, we did have, the plans before showed impacts on the Mosby Woods community in that particular area. Our engineers worked to basically put the access for, into the managed lane in the center, and therefore eliminated the impacts on that community as well. Another key component of this particular project is making sure that we take care of the safety elements. We are eliminating a lot of the tight loops that exist in interchanges, as well as eliminating the weaving motion that is going on as we get in and off of the interstate. Many of you have seen our gantries that are going up on 66 as a part of our active traffic management project that we have ongoing. We will incorporate that during the construction and as well as after the construction, developing strategies for real-time information related to parking spaces, as well as travel information. One of the questions that we've gotten a lot is even dealing with connected vehicles in the future. And by having this type of facility in place, that will help to facilitate that as well. So next, a very, very important component to our project: moving more people. An integral part of this project is the transit service, new transit service, new and expanded park-and-ride lots, as well as our TDM strategies. Our staff has been working with the Department of Rail and Transportation, and they've been working with all of the jurisdictions, the transit professionals, as well as the TDM professionals, in order to come up with new service routes, and also develop two new services. One dealing with commuter service, and then there's a rapid bus service that we're looking Just to describe those services a little more, remember, nothing is being taken away. The existing, existing service that we currently have now will stay in place. This is above and beyond that. So the new service on 66 for the commuter bus is basically in the peak hour direction, both PM and AM and PM peak. Using direct access of the managed lanes, providing a more reliable trip, those services will actually provide a one-seat ride to all of those destinations that people are going, whether they're going into the district, into Tysons, that service will be there doing the peak hours. But also, a very important point is that another service is the new rapid bus service. This will be an all-day service, which will provide service in both directions, doing peak, even on weekends, using the managed lanes facility as well, and making sure that we move more people through the quarter and provide them more reliable and more travel So here are the park-and-ride lots that we have. At Monument and at Cushing, those park-and-ride lots are being expanded. New park-and-ride lots are being proposed at Haymarket, Gainesville, and Manassas, approximately 4,000 new spaces before 2025. Transportation demand management. It's just a strategy where we basically try to encourage people to use another mode of transportation, as opposed to just driving alone. There's incentives for creating van pools and carpooling, as well as marketing and branding, to make sure that we can provide folks options and information on those options, travel options that are out there. This is already in the region, and we will just build upon that program as well. Now, the key for us is by having the enhanced transit service, as well as additional and new park-and-ride lots, expanded park-and-ride lots, and the TDM strategies, this project will move more people, taking them from a point-to-point destination, one-seat ride, and also affording them with a reliable, affordable alternative to driving. Another key component to this project is bicyclists and pedestrian. At all of our bridge crossing, and this is similar, this is at Germantown Road, we've worked with Prince William and Fairfax Counties to identify these locations, and we have crossings, pedestrian crossing on all of our facilities. Another key component that we're working on, and it's just a feasibility study, that we will, once we actually complete our work with Prince William and Fairfax, will be incorporated into, in the revised environmental assessment. But there's a parallel trail in Fairfax's comprehensive plan and Prince William's that we will, we're trying to incorporate, are seeing of evaluating the feasibility of incorporating those projects into our plan. And that's what you see here. They haven't been physically incorporated into the plans yet, but we will continue to work on that. Public outreach. This is probably one of the most important things that we can do. Susan and Ho have been doing a lot of the heavy lifting on this. We've actually been out to more than 100, and provided more than 119 briefings to impacted homeowners, to community groups, elected officials at all levels, and transportation groups. And we are, if we haven't touched you, please let us know. We'll be more than happy to come out to your community and give you a specific briefing or a special briefing on this particular project. We ask that you continue to follow us on transform66.org. We've received over 1,000 comments, we receive letters, and we respond to them as well. Your input is very important into this process, because you will truly influence the preferred You've probably heard in the news, there's some, our secretary and also the governor on TOP talked about the method of procurement. Right now, it can range from a publicly financed design bill contract to a public-private partnership. All those are being considered by our professionals at this particular time, and our Commonwealth Transportation Board will make a decision on that later this year. So here we are, at the public hearing. This is an official public hearing, so therefore, your comments will become a part of the official record. After today, we will take those comments, as well as information that we've gained from our environmental assessment, as well as the traffic information, which will lead us to a preferred alternative. Next year, we will be back to you with a designed public hearing, more details on the plan, and then we're still tracking towards a 2017 start-of-construction date. So here's how we will, you can provide us comments. You will be given an opportunity in a few minutes. However, all your comments must be received by June 18th in order to be a part of the However, all your comments must be received by June 18th in order to be a part of the official record. You can mail them, and there's an information on the next page. We have comment sheets, as I indicated. We have a court reporter. You can mail them to Susan Shaw, email, or you can just submit them online, but your comments are welcome. And we just ask that you stay in touch with us through transform66.org. And we thank you for your participation tonight. Now, let me start off, let, this is how we will proceed through the public comment period. Elected officials will be given first priority. Each speaker, you should have signed up. If you haven't, just let us know, and we'll sign you up so that we can have those names available. Also, individuals will be given three minutes to speak. Everyone will have three minutes to speak, and I have to abide by those three minutes because there are a lot of people who would like to speak. And if you don't get your full testimony heard here, the court reporter is always available for you to provide comments. If we have a series of four other, three other public meetings, what we will do is take those folks who we haven't heard from, if you should attend another one tomorrow night and the other two next week, we will have those folks to speak first before actually opening up to folks that we've heard from before. So with that, I'm going to ask Susan. Susan will call the names, and then you will actually come up to the podium. The timer's right in front of you, so you will, you will know the amount of time that First, we'll start with the elected officials. Chairman Bolivar.
Thank you, Renee. Great job. And actually, I was not intending to speak, I'm here mainly to listen to you. Fairfax County has and will be weighing in on this project. We're working closely with VDOT, with their staff. Of course, this is an important project to try to make improvements to I-66, to make it flow better, but we're also extremely concerned about the impact that that project would have on properties. And so, we've made it clear in Fairfax County that, that, you know, we're interested in seeing a design that minimizes the impact of takings and the effect on properties, especially properties that are adjacent and very nearby. So I'm here to listen. Thank you for coming out. This is a fantastic crowd. And I also would like to thank our staff from VDOT. They've really done a very, very good job of reaching out to the community, explaining and translating something that could be very technical into, into language that is understandable, and that's very appreciated. So with that, thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Markim. I am the state delegate that represents the area that's most impacted by this. If you saw the maps earlier, I have the district that starts just a little bit eastern here, starting where the 50 and 66 meets, up to Tysons. And so, 34 of the 35 homes that were slated to be possibly taken were my constituents. And so naturally, I've had serious concerns about this from the very beginning. But the only thing I want to say today, and I'll save my public comments and the official formal comments for the deadline when I file in writing, but I want to just say two points. One is, I want to echo the chairman in thanking everybody, especially everybody here from the public who are here, but also the staff and others for working on this diligently and for listening to each other and making sure that the conversations are meaningful and substantive and not just concerns that are being raised and then people just dismissing that. So that's really important, and let's continue to do that. And I want to thank in particular the constituents, especially those who live in the Dunloaring area, the Transform 66 Wisely Organization, and many other state Dunloaring. I've heard your concerns, I want to hear your concerns continuously. All the meetings that we've had until now have been informal, and as you just heard from Renee, starting today, the four meetings that we have, this is a formal public hearing process. So even if you've written already, even if you've expressed your concerns, please do so again, because I want to see your writing, your concerns in writing as part of this proceeding, and I'll be fine with mine as well. But the second thing I want to say, though, is this isn't over yet. This is, as you can see, a very preliminary start to a long process. There have been a lot of changes already. I heard the governor this morning, and I know the secretary of transportation has also said that things are still being considered. This is a time for you to make sure that your voices are to weigh in as much as you can. If you have specific concerns that you don't think has been addressed yet, please contact me, please contact our state senator, please contact all of your local and state and federal elected officials, because we're going to continue this dialogue. And at the end of the day, whenever this project is finally over, whenever the project is done, we want to make sure that it's done with absolute input from everybody, and so we minimize the damage or minimize the impact as much as possible, and we maximize the benefit for all of our constituents. So with that, I want to thank you all for making the time to be here. I'll see you tomorrow in Oakton, which is part of my district. And for those of you who can't make it, please continue to engage online through letters, your phone calls, and most importantly, talking to each other so that we maintain that source of information going.
Yes, I'm Pat Herring, Springfield District Supervisor. You may not know this, but Springfield's not in the Springfield District, but this building and a big part of 66 is. I'm one of those people that was talked about that aren't on 66 but should be on 66 because too many of our folks spend their lives trying to avoid I-66 or spending their lives on 66. I want to start by thanking the governor and secretary, Lane and VDOT, for keeping this project on the front burner and keeping that 2017 construction start date in, you know, in plain view and in plain sight. You know, I think the express lanes is the consensus solution. You know, I think it's a very minority of folks that don't feel that, but the devil is in the details, and it's how we get this project out of people's yards. And I look back to one of the biggest lessons we've had in this area is what the private sector creativity can do. The 495 Beltway project started out as a $3 billion project that took hundreds and hundreds of homes. And through public-private sector creativity, we reduced that, or they reduced that to eight homes, and they brought to the table the dollars. We'd still be talking about how to do 495. I just, my comments I want to direct really is to make sure that in this procurement process, we make sure we engage the private sector, and there are a number of private sector partners that are looking to engage on this project. And we make sure that we get their creativity so that we can get this road out of people's backyards and get the financing we need to, we need to build it. There are a lot of questions with the public sector proposal. I understand the answers will be coming forward soon. Where is the, where is the public sector money coming from? Is it coming from our NBTA money that we desperately need for other projects? You know, how are they saving $500 million over the private sector? But we need to get the answers to those questions. I think with the number of competitors, we have the opportunity to get the best solution if we put the public in the private and compete this thing and figure out the best way to go forward. My specific comments, I'm going to get into the county comments. I think that the Springfield and Monument ramps, I think we need to take $100 million off the project, use the existing infrastructure. We can build the ramps later if we need to use the median, but for right now, I think we need to save the $100 million and move forward. I want to thank you, thank you for your time. I'm here to listen to you, and I'll, I will probably be at Oakton tomorrow and maybe also at Bull Run, depending on the schedule. Thank you all very much.
I just wanted to also introduce Dominique Bernudo, who is representing Jerry Conley, Congressman Jerry Conley.
Okay, so are there any other public officials that wanted to speak tonight before we move to our signed-up speakers? All right. What I'm going to do is, we're going to use the seating area over here that some of our staff are sitting in as our on-deck circle over here, if you're familiar with baseball, so that we'll have speakers lined up ready. So I'm going to ask Speaker One is John Claude Demel, and on deck is Number Two, Dean Pike, and Number Three, Greg Scott. So if Dean Pike and Greg Scott, if you're here, you could move into the on-deck circle, so to speak. Okay.
Thank you. My name is Jean-Claude Demel. I live in a condo complex located in East Market Shopping Center. It's located between West Ox Road 608 and the Fairfax County Parkway. It's very close to 66. My concern is the noise. I already hear 66 noise, traffic noise going through. So I want to, I did talk to some of the technical staff here, they were very useful in providing information. Nevertheless, I will provide some detailed comments in writing about my concern about the noise level. We have over 200 condo units located in this complex. We already hear Route 66, and also found out through this discussion that there is no plan to build or erect a noise wall along the way where 66 is right next door to the, to the condo complex. So I will provide comments in writing. Thank you.
Okay, Dean Pike, and on deck is going to be Greg Scott and then Jennifer Madden.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name's Dean Pike, and I live in the East Market community of Fairfax, Virginia. To picture what a widened I-66 would look like, the underutilized I-495 express lanes provide a good example, and that is very concerning. In some sections, I-66, homes would be taken, homes would be depreciated in value, and there would be environmental impacts such as more air and noise pollution. At a time when global climate change is taking place, I feel this is the wrong move for Fairfax County. I do want to thank VDOT staff and also staff of the Fairfax County DOT for answering my questions. I was once a planner with the Fairfax County DOT. VDOT staff told me that it may be necessary to move the highway sound barrier on the north side of I-66 closer to the East Market community. If this were to happen, it might result in the loss of approximately 33 parking spaces in a community with very little off-premises parking. At least one of two children's playgrounds located near the parking area could also be lost to the highway project. Furthermore, a wetland area could also suffer environmental harm as a result of the project. Fortunately, it will no longer be necessary for VDOT to acquire a row of high-end stacked townhouses in the East Market community as a result of design changes. Thank goodness. Earlier this year, I received a letter from VDOT about possible property acquisition in our community. It was told by Fairfax County staff that there will be no access point onto I-66 from the West Ox Road Bridge that will be replaced. That's a benefit to our community because it would just increase the negative impacts on our community. Talking about planning, the Fairfax County Comprehensive Plan calls for a future extension of Metro Rail in the I-66 corridor. It would be necessary to reserve a 40-foot median in the middle of the highway to accommodate a Metro Rail extension, but only one of the current two alternatives reserves this space. I would much prefer that an extension of Metro Rail connecting us to the regional rail system take place over VDOT's proposed highway widening project. And my time's running out. I do want to thank everybody. My suggested alternative, just to wrap up quickly, is to build a light rail line, which is less costly than Metro, built in phases, first to Springfield Road, and then later to Centerville. And, you know, I think it's just absolutely necessary that the county follows its own comprehensive plan.
Okay, I'm going to have to thank you for your comments, and certainly you can continue. And I do apologize, but we're trying to make time for everyone that has signed up.
Thank you very much, folks.
Okay, do we have Greg Scott? As a Number Three speaker? No? How about Jennifer Madden? Thank you. And on deck would be Jeff Ramella.
Thank you very much. My name is Jennifer Joy Madden, and I'm 100 mile district representative on the Fairfax County Transportation Advisory Commission, but tonight I'm talking on my own behalf. Thank you for making this a multimodal project from the start. But it's important that we do consider all modes and future trends in transportation. So those are the things I'm going to be talking about tonight. Concerning bicycling, very quickly, over the bridges right now, you show that there are 12-foot lanes, and I would recommend that those be reduced to 10 feet, not only to save money per bridge, but also it does improve pedestrian cyclist safety, and it doesn't really slow down the traffic, according to the new research that's coming out. I appreciate the fact that you've started to map possible parallel facility on the outside of the 66 corridor for bicyclists. And the three main components of that should be safe, comfortable, and connected to neighborhoods. Does it look like, because it's a draft, that neighborhoods aren't tied in very well, but that's really important. But what is especially important is to connect to park and ride facilities and to the metro station. Right now, the idea would be that people would come from the neighborhoods and park at the park and ride facilities and ride the high-quality transit. But right now, the routing on the map is around the interchanges, around Vienna Metro, and pretty far around Fair Oaks Mall. And so, you know, as you continue to think about this, if you try to work a little bit harder to have it be as straight a shot as possible for people to get to the park and ride facilities and between them. And also, if you could use Route 7 as a model, you are widening the Dulles Toll Road Bridge right there west of Tysons and have done a fantastic job building underpasses, proposing, not, it's not a proposal anymore, it's final, underpasses under the ramps around the Dulles Toll Road. So that's a great model for this project, too. As for future trends, connected vehicles and automated vehicles are here. I asked the Secretaries of Transportation about this at the Transportation Research Board this year. They said that projects shouldn't be stopped because of this impending revolution in travel, but that any project should be as flexible as possible. So it's really important that whatever agreement is made and whoever controls this facility has to be, has to, it has to be adaptable, and restrictions are not going to be helpful in the future because we aren't really sure what's going to happen. However, there's enough known that Virginia Tech and the federal ITS people should be consulted right now, and you should do some modeling to 2040 of what could happen with these vehicles, because they're going to mix with traffic for about the next 25 years. And it's important to know how that's going to impact. It might hurt the economic model in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff Ramella, Ramell, and on deck is Marjan Arzon-Pool.
The proposed Interstate 66 transformation plans will have significant impacts, both direct and indirect, to the environment throughout the project's lifespan. Both plans, Alternative 2A and 2B, will build many flyovers and overpasses designed to serve communities willing to pay unlimited tolls or a limited number of carpools and buses at the environmental cost of our Dunloaring, Falls Church, Maryfield, and Vienna communities. I'm writing to register the strongest possible objection to the proposed I-66 transformation from 495 to Haymarket, Virginia, and associated draft plans for the following reasons. Health and safety. The existing plans will replace the bridge at Gallows Road and create a six-lane roadway that ends in front of Stenwood Elementary. This increase in lanes will leave a bottleneck of traffic and safety concerns in front of the school. This will leave unnecessary, this will unnecessarily increase the safety risk to the children who walk to school and buses, and parents that will need to navigate the needless traffic area to take their children to and from school. In addition, the added air pollution and exhaust will fall on our children's schools, parks, trails, and communities from the new proposed I-66 and 495 toll flyovers and exit ramps. Noise. The existing plans will encroach and abruptly take land from Stenwood Elementary, increasing the noise levels children will be exposed to and impacting their learning environment inside inside and outside the classroom. In addition, there are nine flyover proposed that rise up as high as 80 feet, well above that of any sound barrier. The sounds from cars, buses, tractor trailers will negatively penetrate our community. Visual impact. The visual impact of these plans will invade Dunloaring when nine flyovers rise up to 80 feet. No studies have been done to determine or examine these concerns or impacts. Alternatives. The alternative section is the heart of the NEPA process. Part of the purpose of NEPA is to promote efforts which will prevent or eliminate damage to the environment and the biosphere. The information provided in the existing EA assessment draft does not demonstrate this rigor. A more prudent use of taxpayer funds would be to consider the do-no-harm alternative. Virginia citizens demand more thorough research and evaluation to be given to the do-no-harm alternative. It can be found at Transform66wisely.org. Do-no-harm alternative plans uses the existing boundaries of I-66 in the Dunloaring area, still being able to create additional lane each way, and pushes the toll lane designs between Nutley and Haymarket, Virginia. The cost savings environmentally and financially to our community and to Virginia taxpayers make this a winning combination. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
On deck is Gail Parker. And I apologize because I did get your order a little bit mixed up there, but...
Hi. My name is Marjan Arzonpooli, and I guess two of the affected lots that are, I guess, no longer being taken, which originally were being taken, are my home and my mom's land that's been purchased right next to ours. I guess we purchased the property in 2012, did about $100,000 in renovations on the inside, and my mom bought the lot next to it so she could retire and build her home there. And originally, they said that they were going to come, take it, and do the stormwater management, which they're not doing anymore. For me, at that point, I was really upset because they were going to take the whole thing, but that was more acceptable as to what they have now, where they are basically building the wall right on my property line. So right now, I can't really see the wall unless the trees are bare in the winter, and that's about 30 feet. They would be right on the driveway, and we would not have access because they're going to take a good portion of the driveway. So we wouldn't be able to even drive up into the house. So I don't know what they would do in that situation. And my mom's land is taken, if I can tell from the map, it looks like about a third of the land. She can no longer build the house there. So, I mean, I have small kids. We bought the house because they go to Stenwood. It's walking distance to the school. The metro is right close to us, but obviously, like I said, I'd rather have you guys take the whole thing than to have the wall right next to my house where the sound is already so loud. We can't exactly hear it indoors, but as soon as we step outside, I mean, it's really loud. So that's all I have to say.
Speaking on deck is Chris Gregory.
I'm Gail Parker, also known as Gail Ferrell Parker. I'm state vice chair of the Independent Green Party. The Independent Green Party is the most active on ballot third party in Virginia in 100 years. The Independent Green Party of Virginia opposes the billion-dollar boondoggle toll roads. The Independent Green Party urges that we cut taxpayer subsidies to zero for big oil, big auto, and big asphalt. The positive Independent Green Party solution is rail. Rail along 66. We need to put our resources into building walkable, bikeable, building rail, and pedestrian-friendly communities. Every dollar invested in walkable, friendly communities makes us safer and more secure. Rail and bikes grow the value of our homes, our businesses, and our communities. Rail grows revenue for our schools, police, and fire departments. I thank you for your attention, and I am Gail Ferrell Parker, Independent Green Party candidate for Fairfax County Board of Supervisors. And I do have a question. I would like to know from Renee, please. What can we do or can be done to convince VDOT, the governor, and the state transportation secretary, the transportation secretary, to say no to the billion-dollar boondoggles and to say yes to the positive rail solution? What can be done?
We're not taking questions. The purpose for this meeting is just to get your comments, but I can meet you outside and we can discuss it. Thank you.
Okay. So Chris Gregory. And on deck is Sonia Brehe.
Hi. My name is Chris Gregory. I'm the Longfellow Precinct Captain for the Fairfax Democrats, but I'm here as an individual. I'm here because a friend of mine would lose most of his yard in the Dunloaring area under this plan. I also happen to live a half-mile from the West Falls Church Metro Station. My neighbors on Greenwich Street, Islewood Road, and elsewhere along Great Falls Street. We were all impacted by the completed I-66 spot widening. I invite everyone to come to Hancock Road Bridge over I-66 at 5:30 yesterday evening, eastbound into DC. The access road from Tyson's and 66 itself was not moving. It was a parking lot. I walked to a friend's. We went to another meeting in Fairfax. We went westbound to Nutley Street, and then it all choked up. My point is, I can walk to West Falls Church Metro Station. The Washington and Old Dominion bike and walking trail is a mile away. I have options, but my home, my parents' home, which they bought in '57, since 1970, we have had heavy commuter traffic. I came to a meeting about the Silver Line last year. I talked to one of the county planners. I said I couldn't wait for the Silver Line to open because it would hopefully take some of the pressure off Great Falls Street. Great Falls Street, if any of you know it, is a well-known bypass to Route 7 between Lee Highway and 123 near Tyson's. Anyway, the Silver Line has been open almost a year. The spot improvements were completed over a year ago for 66. We have parking lots. We still have heavy commute traffic. It has not improved. I love Metro. I use it. I walk to it. I'm going to take Metro into DC tomorrow, so we need to preserve the metro option. We do not need to sacrifice the land for a future metro option for express lanes. And one comment. Interurban, which operates and built the I-95 express lanes, revenues are way under projection, and their shareholders are very upset. They have, their revenues are down over 50% since the express lanes opened. So I'm not so sure the private sector is going to regard this as a good investment. Thank you all very much for your time.
So speaking is Sonia Brehe. And on deck is Sue Lee.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Brehe, and I live in Falls Church and longtime resident of Fairfax County. I work with Fairfax Advocates for Better Bicycling in my community association to help improve the livability and the safety of biking and walking in our neighborhoods. So I think most of us will agree that the improvements to the I-66 corridor are necessary, but, you know, I believe to truly transform I-66 for the future, we need long-term solutions that are truly multimodal, that maximize public transit and biking and walking connections. I really appreciate the incorporation of the bike and pedestrian facilities for reconstructed bridges. These connections are imperative to ensuring neighborhoods are not severed by this massive highway and that our bridges remain a humane place for residents to walk and bike to transit, schools, or anywhere they need to go. I am concerned, however, that while I understand you're continuing to study the feasibility of the parallel bicycle facility, the trail still has not been included in the project. An I-66 parallel trail would provide significant connectivity to the Northern Virginia Transportation Trail Network. A recent study showed that 25% of Fairfax County residents live within a mile of I-66 or within a half-mile of either the Fairfax County Parkway or WNOD trails, both of which would be connected by a parallel trail. In fact, over 500 county residents provided comments to VDOT, asking that the parallel trail be part of the multimodal solutions. They know, as I do, that a parallel trail along I-66 could provide direct access for biking and walking from our neighborhoods to current and future public transit and park-and-ride lots, to suburban centers like Maryfield and Fairfax Corners, and employment centers throughout central Fairfax County. And this would certainly help to make the TBM program much more successful. And while the EIS suggests a trail would require additional right-of-way, VDOT should really seek to reduce those impacts by fitting as much of the trail within the existing project right-of-way, minimizing impacts to neighbors. It is also essential that VDOT provides a safe and consistent trail for its entire length to ensure maximum use for all ages. Circuitous routes outside of the immediate I-66 corridor is inefficient, is confusing, and may reduce its successfulness. If absolutely necessary, upgrading the bike and pedestrian facilities, including wave-finding signs, along the alternative routes would be critical. I also urge you to address bike and pedestrian crossings at Route 50, 123, and other significant interchanges where bridges are not being rebuilt. So please take the long view and provide a safe, accessible connection for people to walk and bike to transit in places they need to be in their neighborhoods. Thank you.
So this is Sue Lee. And on deck is Kwong He. And let me just briefly mention that we do have staff out at the boards if you wanted more time to review those. That's why we didn't include any boards here. So if you need to leave or you can't stay for all the public comment session, you're welcome to go outside. Right now, we have a total of 22 speakers signed up, just to give you a feel for that. Okay. Thank you. So Sue?
Good evening. My name is Sue Lee. I'm from Dunloaring, and I'm here to reiterate that the outside of Beltway project would severely impact or destroy the transit-oriented communities in Dunloaring, Vienna, and Falls Church. We are the people who chose to live in the smaller transit-oriented home and pay higher taxes to avoid driving in congestion. We support public transit, take Metro to work, and do not contribute to the congestion on I-66. In fact, we help to ease the traffic congestion. I am very disappointed to learn that under VDOT's plan for May 12, hundreds of people, including myself, will still lose our homes partially or completely. Our children's school at Stenwood Elementary School will still be lost partially even after the VDOT staff indicated at the Kuma School Meeting that they would have their design team remove the impact. My home is ready finally to walk to the metro station and the Stenwood Elementary School, and it remains to be completely taken according to the plan. We moved to Dunloaring metro area to be close to the public transit. However, the very residents who invested in transit-oriented housing are the people who will see our homes condemned, our children displaced from their school, and air and environment polluted from years of construction, and neighborhoods destroyed with several huge 80-foot flyover ramps towering over the neighborhoods. And eventually, our property values decrease. Thousands will face the permanent aftermath after, I'm sorry, thousands will face the permanent aftermath left behind. During the after-governor session this morning on WTOP, Governor McAuliffe emphasized that his job is to protect taxpayers' dollars. Has VDOT performed enough due diligence, cost benefits, and traffic analysis that the home and lane takings to make way for the Gallows Bridge and road expansion, as well as tollings on I-66, will truly result in congestion relief to benefit the public? How is VDOT going to ensure that they will provide just compensation and be able to relocate us to a comparable home that still meets our needs, to be close to the metro, to the transit, and to the school? Have you ever let, with the fears and stress, that your home will be taken and you'll be forced to be moved to someplace else that you don't want to? Would you let your homes be taken and part of your children's schools and parts, you know, turned into tollings without guarantee of grid law relief? It is not reasonable to use eminent domains to punish us, the very transit-oriented communities. Please build within the existing right-of-way and invest in mass transit options. And also, please seriously consider the alternative from our community, as called Do No Harm. It's available on the Transform66YC website. Thank you for listening to our voice.
And after that, Catherine Galanis.
My name is Kwong He from Dunloaring. I'm here to explain why the Transform66 project would be bad for residents, commuters, and Northern Virginia. VDOT's claims that all the devastation to the Dunloaring, Vienna, and Falls Church community will benefit commuters by easing congestion. Yet, the more we learn about the project, the more we learn that the project will leave commuters worse off than they are today. Specifically, VDOT's proposal involves the eliminations of one general-purpose lane, the lane many Virginia refer to as the shoulder lanes, to create two HOT lanes, the managed lanes. The project will eventually result in a decrease in general-purpose lane during rush hours. In other words, commuters are forced into horrible decisions, sit in an even worse traffic, or pay a hefty toll twice a day, adding thousands of dollars a year to the cost of their commutes. Moreover, VDOT has stated that it has no intent to expand I-66 inside the Beltway until at least 2040. Even if some commuters do not care about paying thousands of dollars a year to use the hot lanes, the project is just funneling even more drivers into the same two-lane bottleneck I-66 inside the Beltway or the already congested 495. Why expand I-66 outside the Beltway and make Fairfax into a parking lot? VDOT has a different treatment for Arlington and Fairfax. Arlington has consistently pushed back against VDOT's expanding I-66 to protect the precious existing communities. VDOT continues to tell the public that they've reduced the possible eminent domains to only 11 to 18. However, they always omit the other, over hundreds of partial land takings and negative impacts to thousands of adjacent homeowners along the 25-mile I-66 corridor. VDOT can eliminate almost all the complete and partial home takings by ending the hot lanes between Cambridge Road and Nully Street. Metro is costly, but it is not an expense. It is investment that creates new economic development area like Tyson Corner or North Side District. Business wants to be close to Metro so that workers can reach their office by Metro, and people want to live near the Metro so they can easily commute to work. To begin with extending the Orange Line Metro to Fair Oaks, where there are thousands of existing parking space, this will truly reduce cars on the road and fix I-66. Please correct this before it is too late. Please build within existing right-of-way. Do not take the lanes and homes like they are free. One eminent domain is too much, even one. Thank you.
Okay. And on deck is Mary Hagopian.
Hi. I'm Catherine Galanis, and I just wanted to say that I'm surprised that Fairfax and the Commonwealth and the counties are pursuing I-66 in what seems to me to be in kind of a backwards manner. Given the fact that so many people are moving in, this is an area still of growth, we should be pursuing better mass transit. We should start with light rail or metro rail, then move to expand the lanes if that's not sufficient. We've been building highways in America since, you know, the infrastructure, since the 1955. I think it's time to do something different. Let's do a rail system first, and then we'll have some time and we will have options to consider what available technologies are open to us, rather than just, you know, just cars and drivers. Thank you. (applause)
Okay, this is Mary Hagopian, and then Hitesh Dev is on deck.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mary Hagopian, and I would like to speak to you tonight on behalf of my family and neighborhood with regard to the unwise and ill-thought expansion of I-66. We are a retired United States Marine Corps family, and we have lived in this area on and off for the last 30 years. In August of 2007, we purchased our home at 856 Pritchard's Court in Dunloaring, which abuts the I-495 interchange to I-66 by Northwest Quadrant. Shortly after we moved in, we became aware of the expansion of I-495 and the development of hot lanes on it. With almost no time to react as homeowners with adjacent property, reconstruction of this interchange began in July 2008 and continued for the next four years. Throughout that time, we lived without a sand wall for nine months, were awakened many a night with demolition blasts of bridges, and became quite familiar with bulldozers and other heavy construction equipment outside our front window. Interestingly, I would march my children out to the orange fence, which was the only thing separating us from one of the largest interchanges on the eastern seaboard, and I would tell them, "Get a good look. You're seeing history in the making. You won't see this again for 50 years." Rarely do I admit this, and don't tell my husband who's standing in the back, but I was wrong. It took VDOT and Transurban four years to complete the I-495 hot lanes, and now, a mere three years later, not 50, they want to start all over again, tearing down and reconfiguring what they just built at this interchange to add a high-speed flyover ramp 80 feet into the air and take one of the only small forests remaining in this area away from the wildlife, away from the conservation easement of which it is designated, and away from a community that has been established here for 25 years. Compared to the vetting that was conducted and completed for the I-495 hot lanes and the decade it took to, beginning in 1994, to complete it, the rapid advancement of the I-66 widening, lack of home and property owner notification and desired project start date less than two years from now could be considered, at the very least, reckless. We would like to see this project stopped altogether because, by all admissions, it won't solve the problem. There is no foresight in its planning, and it punishes those of us who chose to live close to DC. Despite all that, though, we are asking you to scale back the design for this interchange and work within the existing right-of-way. We are asking you to utilize the current existing ramp that moves traffic from I-495 south onto I-66 west and not add any additional high-speed flyover ramps. And we are asking that you move Alternative Plan Number Three, Do Nothing at I-495, otherwise termed Do Not Harm or Do No Harm, found on the last page of Appendix C, Segment 3, in VDOT's Tier Two Environmental Assessment I-66 Alternatives. We ask that you move that to the forefront of the design presentations, ahead of Alternatives 2A and 2B, and now alongside 2C, as an option that would not only reduce costs, but it would not destroy our community. And finally, we are asking VDOT and our elected officials to be mindful of your citizens who live and work in this area and hear our voices. Thank you.
Okay, Hitesh Dev is up next, and on deck is Flint Webb. Is Hitesh here?
Am I saying that right?
Okay, so Flint Webb, now you're up to bat. And Benny Venttasson is on deck.
My name is Flint Webb. I live in Vienna, Virginia, and not very far from Gallows, which is going to be impacted pretty severely by this project. And I'm also in the Environment Chair for the Fairfax County Federation Citizens Association. My comments tonight are my own, not those of the Federation. Hopefully, I'll get them to have a resolution tomorrow, and we have more formal presentations. The purpose and the prioritization of VDOT projects is to reduce congestion. The best way to reduce congestion is mass transit. I appreciate that the project has accommodated future Orange Line expansion, but we need to prioritize, we need this project to set the stage for Orange Line expansion once the Roslin Tunnel has been resolved, congestion issue has been resolved. What is needed is a bus rapid transit project, build the bridges and the stations in the center of I-66 now, and have bus routes with five-minute headways or the same, similar headways as the Orange Line currently during rush hour. You will get the congestion reduced much more than if you go ahead with the project as proposed. Once the Roslin Tunnel choke point is resolved, the Orange Line could be expanded one station at a time. This way, you could use the Orange Line right-of-way to reduce or eliminate any need for any taking of properties. I also wanted to address the recent changes in the design, reducing the number of homes being taken. It has been done on the assumption that they only had to provide sufficient stormwater retention for the additional impervious surfaces being proposed in the project. That would be fine if the current stormwater retention is adequate for I-66, and it is clearly not adequate. So I don't think that you should be given that grandfather position, because I think you need to fix the problem that was originally in the design in the first place. I think that's, I got 30 seconds. Okay. I also understand that you're not doing anything about climate change. I think we need to look at climate change. I think you need to look at climate change in this project. I understand that, you know, there are no standards, so you don't really have to do anything. Well, that's not really true. It's going to be impacting, and in the long run, that's the biggest problem we face today. 10 seconds. Okay, I'm done.
So this is Benny.
Benny Venttasson.
Okay, and on deck is Len Warren.
I appreciate everybody being here. Chairwoman Belova, Delegate Keem, Supervisor Harity, Dominic, Transportation Board members. I'd like you all to turn around for a second. I've been to several one of these meetings. Who in the room is for what VDOT just put up on the board and says this is a great solution? Raise your hand high. See that? Court reporter, zero. That's the zero number. This is a regional problem that requires a regional solution. None of that's up there. You say, "Oh, what if, you know, people want to be on 66 but they can't be?" But what about when construction happens? What about those people that have to suffer through it? And those numbers you put up there are from 2014. Guess what? Those are already out of date. It's 2015. Those people that want to be there, they can't be there because construction is going to be going on. And then, when construction is done in 2020, 2021, if they're still here, can they afford the tolls? The folks that moved out west of 50 moved there for a reason. They want to have a bigger house. They want to spend time with their family. They want to have the yard. Are they going to be able to put funds in the tolls? We see that Transurban is under budget for what they expected to pull in for 95. Do you think they're going to be able to make those funds up on 66? Now, I applaud you for saying it's not a guaranteed P3 solution. That's good, because we saw Transurban. They're not managing 495 as it should in 95. They're coming up short. So who's paying that bill? Every one of us in this room are paying that bill. So I encourage you. We have the blueprint. It's north and west to us. Look at 267. We put the metro out there. We have a toll road. Folks go on Route 7 if they don't want to pay the toll. Well, guess what? We have a translation for 66. 66, it's disappointing. We barely have three stations in Fairfax County on the Orange Line, maybe two and a half. East Falls is right on the line. That's embarrassing. It's 2015. Let's get Metro out. People will use it. We see it on the Silver Line. I'll even be happy if you put it over. You don't have to go under. We see it out there. Folks, they either, they pay the tolls on 267, or they suffer on Route 7. So why not translate that? Look at Route 29 on the map. Look at Route 50. Folks can get on that if they want to pay the tolls. I know that, you know, the Federal Highway Administration has rules, but let's find a regional solution around those rules. Make it a full toll, like 267. You see that? People pay it if they want to ease congestion. They don't want to ease congestion? They work from home. They take the Silver Line. They take Route 7 and suffer down there. You've made improvements to Route 7. That's great. That helps people get into Tysons and get into DC and other points. I appreciate it.
Okay, Len Warren, and on deck is Robert Banfield, or Barfield. Is Len Warren in the room? No. How about Robert Banfield? And then on deck would be Frederick Baron.
Yeah, my name is Robert Banfield. I live in Dunloaring Woods. I'm going to be a block and a half from the stormwater structure there, and I'm very new to this. I'll tell you the truth, I hadn't heard much about it until I saw the posting yesterday and found out about it today. So I'll try to just speak on what little information I do know. One, that storm drain is at a wooded area that's a monarch butterfly refuge area. And also, it seems like somebody has tanked the project to straighten that creek up and it's kind of falling on death ears all of a sudden. I'm not sure what that's about. But I guess the big thing that bothers me is I'm going to be living through this over however many years, and VDOT has, I'm a government contracts attorney, and they have not shown me that they know how to enter a contract that takes care of us while we're living there. How many times have I had contractors, you know, backed me up, and there's nobody out there? I'll call the governor's office complaining. I just don't believe that VDOT has shown us that it's willing to get its contracting people in hand and to build a contract that would allow us to tolerate living there. When they did the punch list over there at Gallows Road and 29 or Lee Highway, the whole neighborhood was blocked in all four directions because that contractor was trying to get his punch list. There was no VDOT presence taking care of that situation. When they were cleaning up out there on the end in Manassas, taking the way out of town at 7:00 in the morning, and they had two men picking up cones for a five-mile stretch, VDOT was not managing these contracts. VDOT needs to show us that it can enter a contract where we could manage to live through five years of it. It's pretty much talking to these people out front. I raised this issue, and I was told, "Well, we're going to do a design build." That throws all the burden on the contractor, and that's exactly what they've been doing. That's not a fix for us living here during this construction. It's just, it's nonsensical to even suggest that. That's just the opposite of what we're wanting to hear. You know, they need to train some procurement people and manage these contracts. I think a lot of complaints about these people that's been dealing with these other situations is because VDOT didn't manage these contracts. I asked about the noise barrier while I was outside and was told that basically my neighbors are going to have to vote to want people to come building in their backyards and fix this wall, or the wall's going to stay the same. This is in the Dunloaring Woods area, so I can't imagine that that wall's going to get bigger. I can't really imagine that there's been a proper study of just how much sound you've got out there with six lanes, and we're talking about widening it. So we're going to take the same wall, we're going to widen it, leave out an area that's a speed-up and slowdown area that makes it much noiseier there. That's all I got.
Aaron, and on deck is Lincoln Rhodes.
Thank you. My name is Frederick Baron. I'm a citizen of the Commonwealth of Virginia. I live in the Dunloaring Woods community. I appreciate the opportunity for citizen input. I appreciate the interest of our elected officials, particularly I appreciate the fact that Delegate Keem has been adequately representing his constituents. I hope that our Fairfax County officials will follow suit. I'm also glad that Governor McAuliffe appears to be hearing some of what his constituents are saying with, by expressing skepticism about public-private partnerships that too often put profit ahead of the public interest and by putting increased emphasis on the transit aspects of this plan. But my time is short, so I'll try to make my points concisely. VDOT should not expand I-66 in this corridor at this time. Widening I-66 would have significant negative impact on transit-oriented communities like mine. There will be property takings that would destroy homes or impact people's yards. It would have impact on Stenwood Elementary School. We would have increased traffic, noise, and air pollution. Our communities and our families would pay the price for this. We deserve the same consideration given to Arlington County residents. I'm skeptical of the projected amelioration of traffic congestion that VDOT is putting forward here, since VDOT's own study shows that nine lanes will be needed to accommodate traffic on I-66, and that's not in the works here, thank goodness. The additional traffic that would be on I-66 in this corridor would just be funneled into the unwidened, two-lane I-66 inside the Beltway, so we would just have that funnel causing a longer backup. Building additional lanes could have a perverse effect of keeping people in their cars rather than going to transit-oriented development. I also wonder why VDOT would take what appears to be an elitist approach, under which those who can afford high tolls can avoid traffic, while there are no additional general-purpose lanes for those who cannot afford the tolls. So what is the alternative? Put transit first. Extend VRE by funding the existing plans, bring Metro to full capacity with A car trains, accelerate efforts to expand the metro system, improve bus networks to VRE and Metro, develop bus rapid transit, develop sluglines to put more people into the cars that are on I-66 and other roads, and apply some of VDOT's creativity to developing other transit options. If we put the transit first, then we can see what impact that transit can have and get people out of the habit of driving their cars every day. Thank you very much for that.
Lincoln Rhodes, and on deck is John Elsroth.
Lincoln Rhodes, Circle Woods Homeowners Association resident. We're located right near the south side of the Vienna metro station. I say just say no to A and B. These are not the right options. This has been misguided from this front. There will be no bus lanes because Fairfax County cannot compete against Metro, so no Fairfax County bus can travel all the way into DC. It has to go to a railhead. So that's a falsehood. I'm HOV-2. I drive in with my wife into the DC every day, and I don't feel that I should have to lose my right as HOV-2 and free to go into DC through Arlington. Arlington isn't going to move. This is going to be a bottleneck that's still going to be bottling up at the intersection there. So HOV-2 inside and outside the Beltway in Fairfax. HOV-3, if they want to charge it out in Prince William or the county outside of Fairfax where I-66 run, that's fine with me. The heavy rail needs to go out there. You'll notice they say light rail. Light rail is a metro. So that's another misnomer that's being brought before VDOT. So we want heavy rail, which is metro, to go west out there. We don't want to have Fairfax slug pools along each one of these exits so that Fairfax residents can travel into DC or points north and points south on the Beltway. This is just not right. Also, if we do do this, and it does go through, it's no to the entrance ramps on Avaden Drive. The residents in our area use a ramp that's on Stinksberry and Avaden Drive to go eastbound, and in the new plans, that they're talking about removing that. Also, there's no upgrades to any of the bridges crossing. If they're going to do this, we need to increase the capacity of each of the crossroads bridges that cross I-66 because they're old infrastructure. We need to rebuild the infrastructure. They need to be wider to go across I-66. How am I doing on time? 44 seconds. So no slugs. We, VDOT poorly mismanaged 495 and 95, 75 years to a foreign company that's managing the system. Too many deaths on the roads and not enough lights along those stretches. We've got the same designers here that designed those that are doing the work here. So unfortunately, I think this is a big boondoggle and a waste of money. All we need to do is put 24/7 on our shoulders right now. Increase the ramp at Monument Drive so that 24/7, both people eastbound and westbound, can exit and go to the Fairfax County Government Center. Thank you very much for your time.
John Elsroth, and after that is Mark Norton.
I'm John Elsroth. As Supervisor Harity indicated, the public-private partnership is As Supervisor Harity indicated, the public-private partnership is the preferred funding arrangement for these roads that were built under the National Defense Highway Act of 1956. And I hope you all are aware that the Virginia Public Transportation, Public Private Partnerships are exclusively with foreign corporations. And they are, these contracts are for as long as 80 years, and they involve non-compete clauses that effectively prevent the state of Virginia from making improvements to parallel roadways or to the roadway itself. I-95 contract prevents improvements on Route 1 and the Okeechobee River Bridge. They are crafted to create congestion so that tolls may be collected. Not to mention that the tolls are perhaps $400 a month plus. Can you say chattel mortgage? Inside the Beltway, we have about 400,000 homes, and these homes are served by four-lane roads. If you move outside the Beltway, the same distance as the Beltway is from the Washington Monument, you go 10 miles further out, there are about 1.6 million homes in that area. To service this region, where we're previously servicing them with four-lane roads, we've got to go to 16-lane roads. And the further you go out, it's geometric. So our transportation solutions do not lie in more lane miles. It lies in rail. The rail is the future. And the problem with the VDOT proposal is that it is not only dismissive of rail, but it also takes the rail solution completely off the table because it gobbles up the right-of-way. All the major economic development that we are seeing in Fairfax County is along the rail. It's in Merrifield. It's at Tyson's Corner. It's out in Reston. This is an economic driver. So rail is a really good idea. Why aren't we considering that? Abandon this horse-and-buggy solution, and let's get into the 21st century.
Okay, and Mark Norton, and that is our last signed-up speaker.
Well, thank you for this opportunity here, and thank you for coming to our neighborhood, Susan. So my name is Mark Norton. I'm the president of the Shrevecrest Homeowners Association. Our neighborhood, we believe, would be one of the most victimized of this project. Six of our 46 homes would be demolished. The rest would be left, a half-mile-long, 40-foot ramp, which would dominate our neighborhood and destroy the urban setting, I guess the rural setting that we provide, and create a concrete, essentially, sky scene. Now, our neighborhood is different. We have 2A, which has the ramp, 2B, which doesn't. So needless to say, we're for the alternative without the ramp. In particular, we request the proposed flyover ramp transitioning I-66 eastbound hot traffic to I-495 general purpose lane on the inner loop of the Beltway be eliminated. Thank you. But in reality, we're asking for a vastly simplified 66-495 interchange, whether it be the Do No Harm alternative. But we asked out there, what is, why is 2A taking so many homes when there is an alternative, 2B, which would take less? It seems unconscionable to us that you would not take the less alternative. And the answer that I understand is because there is a clean separation requirement for separate hot lane systems to be managed. And so what this means is, because the Virginia Commonwealth Attorney General can't figure out a way to prorate traffic between two independent hot lane systems, our houses must be destroyed. So needless to say, we believe that those business models that are driving the creation of these ramps are both contrived and hypothetical, and that these ramps can be eliminated in all future design, and that these ramps can be reduced in complexity, be simplified, and saved, essentially, to, as far as I count, over 15 homes. I also have problems about the sound study, which one I have you here. We believe that the environmental impact statement is both inconsistent and contradictory when it comes to our neighborhood. It says that we're reasonable, and we're not reasonable for sound walls. So we'd like to work with you and understand exactly what position we have, given any alternative. Thank you very much, and I guess thank you for the last speaker. Thank you.
That will conclude our public comment period. We still have staff out to answer any specific questions. Just as a reminder, June 18th is the final day that comments are to be in to us, and various ways that you can send them to us on the website, through the mail, out of the comment sheet, and our court reporter is still here. We just want to thank you for your participation tonight, and stay in touch with us. Good night.